Excellent. So, thank you. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of Tuesday, August 1st of 2017. May I please have an approval of the agenda?
Second?
All in favor? Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll go on to the presentations and discussions of interest, I'm sorry, of issues of interest to the committee. And we'll invite Dr. Bucky up for the AP results. Would you like us to swap? Sure. Thank you.
Gate meeting, thank you.
Been sitting next to me.
I will.
So scary.
Sorry. I'm sure this is easier than one of the AP tests.
It is. It's a little bit.
I did what I always do. I plan a presentation and then this afternoon I decided to look for additional information. So, I'm overloaded with information, so bear with me if I get lost in the weeds. This is an easy presentation. I am very pleased with the Advanced Placement results this year. I'm proud of our students. I'm happy for our teachers. We saw great gains in mathematics, which as you are all aware is a district priority. The priority of the high school posted some AP Calculus results like we had not seen. In a couple of years, AP Stats is headed in the right direction. Science also had a great year. AP Bio headed in the right direction. And AP Environmental Science, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Zarison. Biggest gains in an Advanced Placement in the time that I've been here, over a point and a half for her students. So, I'm proud of them, happy for her. Little change in the presentation this year. I think you are all aware of what the Advanced Placement program is through the college board and the numbering system, so I decided not to go down that road this year and to make it a little deeper dive into the data and the information that we get back. So, to start, we have a couple pictures of students in our Advanced Placement program, the annual Spanish club trip to Spain, where most of the students in the AP Spanish class participated in that adventure this spring. And then, students in our AP Chemistry class working on one of the many required labs for that course. We start and look back. The program continues to grow in terms of the number of students participating. We did have fewer tests given this year, but a couple courses did not run. AP Government was not offered this year, and AP Physics and AP Government is generally generally a big draw. So, in '15, we had 199 exams. Last year, the largest number of exams were given at 213. I include the average score for each course and the total number of exams given. First, I want to talk about the exam is not the course and vice versa. The course is not the exam. There are students who might not get a score on an Advanced Placement test that they had hoped for or that perhaps the teacher had hoped for, but that doesn't negate the experience they had in being in an Advanced Placement course. And with our open enrollment, we invite anyone who wants to take on the challenge and the rigor of an Advanced Placement course to do that. I will again beat the drum that I always do. Scores. There are schools that have barriers to their Advanced Placement program, so they sort the students who are in there, and then at the end of the year, they'll look and say, "You're probably not going to do well on the exam, so we're not going to require you to take the exam." So, yes, they get a lot of fours and fives because they had a gate to get in, and then they had students taking the exam that they knew would score well. Our numbers are real. If a student signs up for an Advanced Placement course, we require them to take that exam. So, I'm proud of our numbers. Are all of them where I want them to be? No. But I think we're headed in the right direction, and we have a very honest Advanced Placement program. On to this year's. I do the stoplight highlighting, which can be a bit misleading. The two in red, I'm not significantly worried about. Our Humanities program has always been the flagship of the high school with English Language and Lit and US History in terms of our AP program. Mr. Panchi said all year with the changes to the exam and the format of the course and this particular cohort, he knew that it was going to be a challenge. So, when AP History results came in, he wasn't surprised. I wasn't surprised. So, even though that shows a point drop, those scores have always been so high, as had Lang and Lit. And so, you know, when I present the MCAS results in October, I have often said about our English results. When you have a 98.7, that's a hard CPI to maintain. And the same thing with Lang and Lit. Those scores have been so high that it's hard to maintain at that level at a 3.75, for example. I just want to talk, I want to give you a handout, which I find interesting. The data for 2017, they have the aggregate data, the number of students, the percentage of students who scored 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And then, last year, the 2016 results, they have the average scores for each course. And so, on this slide, I just want to point out a couple things, and you can look at that at your leisure, and it's just another way of looking at the data. But calculus, for example, 42% of our students scored a 4 or a 5. The national average this year was 36%. So, again, shout out to Dr. Williams for great work with AP Calculus. The Language results, our students, 31% were at a 4 or 5. The national average there is a 27%. Our Lit, 58% of students in AP Lit were scoring a 4 or 5. The national average there is less than 23%. So, you know, shout out to Ms. Fannin for what she's doing in AP Lit. And Environmental Science, again, 7 out of 8 students in that course got a 4 or a 5. The national average there is 33%. So, as I led with, I'm very pleased with our Advanced Placement scores this year. As I do, year-to-year comparisons are what we do. I'm not sure they always tell the best story, so I look at a rolling three-year average. What was the average score at Nantucket High School for the last three years? And you can see that we have a lot of things to celebrate and a couple of areas where we want to keep our focus. Zona had asked a question, so I included this slide of students who have left Nantucket High School and have benefited in terms of college placement or college credit for Advanced Placement scores. We put out a survey through our Naviance program to former graduates for the last five years. You can imagine that the return on that survey wasn't spectacular, but a lot of great anecdotal information. Among that, there were students who said they were able to register for courses early at their college or university based on their Advanced Placement scores from here. One student was able to earn enough credits for a minor in her field as a result of the Advanced Placement scores that she got here. A student that went to Dartmouth, they do not give credit for Advanced Placement scores. You're required to take 35 courses, but if you got a certain score, they will put that on their transcript that you transferred in AP credit. Students from Fordham, Bentley, Framingham State, Drew, Seton, Paul, Quinnipiac, all indicated that as a result of doing Advanced Placement coursework here, they benefited at their college or university ability to register early for a course, ability to enroll in a higher-level course. One student, this I thought was spectacular, went to Emerson and got 15 credits and is going to graduate a semester early as a result of her work in Advanced Placement here. So, cha-ching, cha-ching for families that if your student is able to register or able to graduate a semester early. I also pulled up US News and World Report. They do that annual ranking of the top 10 schools. I think this is a couple years out, but the top 10 schools, most of them are giving credit for Advanced Placement coursework. You can see that Harvard and Caltech say no, but most of them for a 4 or a 5, and some even a 3, 4, or 5, will give students credit for Advanced Placement transferring in. We have a student this year who got a 5 on the Advanced Placement Calculus test, not an easy achievement. She's going to Yale, and she will get an advanced standing for that 5 at Yale. So, this is new this year. I do this for our teachers, and the college board has gone away from saying credit or no credit. They make recommendations for colleges. And so, a 5, they say that student is extremely well-qualified to receive college credit. Very well-qualified for a 4, qualified for a 3, maybe possibly qualified for a 2. And they don't say not qualified for a 1. They will say no recommendation. And I think that goes back to an initial point that I made, that it's not about the test score all the time, but it is about the experience of rigorous collegiate or university coursework while you're in high school. So, what I do, this is John Bucky's view, is if you're getting a 5, you're probably in the 90 to 100 range. 4, 85 to 95, 3, 2. And it doesn't mean that if you get a 1 on an Advanced Placement course, you should not have gotten above a 70. But I set these up as kind of parameters where most students should fall. So, if you have a class that six students got a 1, and all six were above a 90, that's a good conversation for us to have. Not necessarily, there's a story behind each number. There's a story behind all the data. You know, some students, and unfortunately, we had an incident this year, get their college acceptance. They say, "Okay, is this Advanced Placement score going to really do much for me?" And then, may not try as hard as they should have on the exam. That's unfortunate. That reflects poorly on the student. It hurts our aggregate scores and is really kind of unfair to the teacher that has spent the year working with that student for the student to say, "Yeah, this isn't going to help me, so I'm not going to take it seriously." So, I'm going to go through the next slides fairly quickly, but to just give you a sense in each course, what the scores were for students and where their grades were. So, you can see in AP Biology, students who got 3 were lower, which for me is better than the opposite, than if they had gotten a 3, had gotten 99s and hundreds, that might be a question. Great in AP Calculus for correlation between scores and tests or in grades. Chemistry, had a great opportunity to have conversation with Mr. Gregory. One thing about the course at the high school and at college, sometimes in high school, we're willing to allow test retakes or half-credit corrections, and so, that affects what a student's grade is, where it might not be indicative of their mastery of content. English Language, lots of students enrolled there, lots of great correlation in scores. Same with AP English Literature. Environmental Science. Research. Spanish Language. Stats. We have a new stats teacher. Again, stats saw improvement this year over the previous year, but I'd like to tighten up the correlation between grades and scores in that course. Studio Art. US History. I'm missing one. Spanish. I wanted to point out one in Spanish. An interesting thing, you can see a student barely passed the course with a 60, but got a 4 on the exam. For me, that's why there's always a story behind the data. That was a student that had clearly tremendous potential in the course, but perhaps wasn't turning in the work, perhaps wasn't meeting expectations, but knew the content. So, our MIE grant has ended. Our corporate partner is no longer with us. We will not move forward. You could stay in that cohort, but I'm not sure it was worth the return on investment. I feel like we got what we needed to out of the MIE grant and can move forward. The college board has no shortage of ways of helping AP teachers use this information to affect their practice. Again, I provide the grade and score comparisons for our teachers. Ongoing professional development, our new AP Statistics teacher, last week, went to the college board workshop for teaching that course. And then, this fall, there are regional training workshops that we'll be sending staff to continue feeding for them. And then, continue to encourage students to enroll in Advanced Placement. I've been here for 10 years. You know that I am, open enrollment is, I'm passionate about it. I believe in it. I think it creates opportunities for students that is not necessary to limit. And I think we have seen the benefit of open enrollment. Question?
First, I want to say thank you. It was quite an introduction, very informative. I appreciate the information.
Imagine all that I've forgotten?
My question is this, though. Suppose a student has a college, got accepted, and they go first semester or the first year, and then they want to transfer. Would the AP possibly then transfer to their second school?
Yes. Is my quick answer to that? I believe transfer credits would apply to the Advanced Placement if the school that they're going to accepts Advanced Placement. I don't think they would have used it up at the original school.
So, that would be a piece to encourage those students that find out they're not going to get credit, that you never know what's in your future.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
What was the teacher's response to the 60 and the 4?
I haven't had a chance to talk to her about that, but I know that that student struggled in the course for the year, but had tremendous potential. And I think the teacher recognized that all year, that the student wasn't working to her potential.
It did something. You did it.
No questions, but I would like to say I really appreciate how much you worked towards making AP an option for everybody. I think this is a great opportunity for our students, and I'm proud of our students. I'd like to see the numbers continue to increase. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would echo Jen's comments. I think it's great, and I truly appreciate your open enrollment. I mean, the class is good, the AP, I think that's terrific. Question, I thought at some point this year, you had mentioned AP Music. Was that last year? Because it doesn't show on this year's.
We've had, we have not offered it live, but I believe a student took it via virtual high school last year. I don't believe.
I thought you had, because there were three students.
I don't believe we had a student take.
Maybe I'm getting my years confused.
I don't think so. It's a very challenging.
At the bottom of the VHS offerings that we had, macroeconomics, we had two students, one got a 1, one got a 2. Psychology.
Okay, so maybe it was me before getting confused, but thank you.
Yeah, I am a huge AP fan. I really like that we have open enrollment, not only because it gives everybody opportunity to take, you know, the course and the test, but I think that putting, you know, the college credit aside, taking an AP course like that is great exposure to that kind of rigor. And for me personally, I took that chemistry exam, and I didn't do it as well as I hoped I would, but that was, again, like, one of the hardest courses I've ever taken in my life. And I want to go into a science in college, so just having the exposure to that kind of high-level course, I think, was amazing, even though my AP test score may not reflect that. So, they're really great to keep around.
Not always about the score.
I don't think I can add anything except my own personal thank you and to the teachers. I know that this AP coursework is a lot of commitment for them as well. And I just am very proud of our students and our staff, so thank you. Anybody else?
It's not part of my presentation, but I do want to welcome Jen Zarren Allen-Suless with us.
Welcome. I saw you sitting over there. Thank you, John.
Very nice to meet you. I guess the only thing I'm thinking about is I watched, and I think it's such a nice job, is I think, in a very common fashion, so much information. And I really appreciate John, Dr. Bucky saying, "The course does not equal the advanced placement." And I think that it's important to do, the challenge of delivering, it's a college-level course. And so, the challenge of delivering, delivering college-level curriculum to 16 and 17-year-old students, they're 16 and 17-year-old kids, is to, so kind of part of your convictions as a teacher, sort of child's scores in the test. And I feel fortunate to have a few great years and a few years in the classroom, because as much as I worry about the test, and I know that at the end of the day, these scores are put up on the screen for people to examine. I think it, I think it takes a day-to-day commitment to taking the child from where that child is to a greater depth of skill. And I think, Matt, you said it so well, which is, I kind of wish my score were a little better, but I want to study science and talking to kids who have gone on, the kids who have taken, opened themselves up to an AP-level course and that level of demand, I do feel more comfortable in a college-level setting. But I would just say, we're a small high school, and I don't know if you guys have ever seen the movie Stand and Deliver. Have you ever seen Stand and Deliver? Jaime Escalante history and, you know, Diamond, or something, I forget. But Jaime Escalante, who's an amazing teacher, he came out afterwards with an article in an education publication, and he said, "That means 90% correct." But the 10% that's not correct is that he didn't teach AP till like five years in the system. And those kids didn't earn those scores until they were in feeder programs, if you know what I'm saying. So, there's so much complexity in these courses, particularly if you're a math and sciences, it's wonderful exposure. But we're a small school, and I think we did very, very well. But we also are always bringing on new teachers and helping teachers get their depth of subject. And I just would say, moving forward, I think Dr. Bucky does a wonderful job of putting the child before the course and accepting that if you're a new teacher, it can be, you can be out of your field at times, if you know what I'm saying? So, the English course, we've been very fortunate, but those are not my scores. Those are the middle school, those are the elementary school scores, those are the middle school English teacher's scores, the ninth, the 10th, the 11th. They all, you know, they begin teaching annotation in ninth grade, you know. I'm not the first one to say, "Hey, here's a novel. You need to annotate it. You need to write about a theme." They have been doing that for years, you know what I'm saying? And I think that's a burn that the AP Calc teacher, you know, that's a privilege the AP Calc teacher doesn't always get. That's a privilege the AP Chem teacher doesn't always get. So, you know, you know what I'm saying? I am so grateful to all the English teachers who come before me. And that's what, if you ever want a really interesting education on AP, just Google Jaime Escalante and his opinion on AP, because he echoes what Dr. Bucky is talking about. You've got to put the child before the exam. And the fact that we are a small school with unique challenges as well. Anyway, that's part of the more.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. Wonderful. Okay, so, next up, we have discussion of adoption of policies. The first one is GBGB. And as a reminder for everybody, tonight is our night to review these and have a discussion about them, and they will come back for a vote at our next school committee meeting. So, GBGB is new for adoption, and it is the Staff Health and Safety. And I'll defer to Jen and to Zona to see if they want to talk about any of these at all, since you are the policy subcommittee members.
I'll defer to Jen.
Okay, thanks, Zona. Well, I'm just going to say that these were policies that MASC had that we felt were applicable to our district and we thought were, you know, important to include into our policies. So, excellent.
We would like for you to review them and give us your comments and feedback, but I think that these would be great to include.
I agree.
Thank you, Zona. I think this is one of the wonderful parts of having a policy subcommittee, is this continual review of policies and recommendations from MASC so that we're staying current with our policy review, so.
And not to belittle it, but it takes a lot of time and effort. Thank you to Mike for being there and keeping us on track every other week that we meet, et cetera, and putting it together, and Logan, of course, for all she does. But it's been quite interesting. It's been quite the journey, I'd say. We're, you know, just finished up handbooks, and we're kind of proud of ourselves, I think.
I think you should be. I think you should be very proud of yourself. Any comments on GBGB or GBGE, which is also in that same section?
GBGB. Why or surgeon? I mean, it should be just physician.
That's just their language they had in there. We left it.
I know, but that's.
If you'd like to strike it, I don't think we feel.
Or surgeon, just a physician. I think it should be.
Okay. Tim's recommending that change. I agree with it.
I'm fine with it.
I didn't even pick up on that.
Me either.
Must have to be a doctor to see that.
It's a little archaic, if I say it is. In England, there's a big differentiation. One's a doctor, and one's a mister.
The next policy for review is GCCAB, focusing on jury duty. I imagine it's somewhat similar. This is a MASC proposal.
Actually, if I may. That is not a MASC proposal, interestingly enough, but Logan picked up on the fact that we really didn't have a policy on jury duty, and yet, we had teachers who were going out on jury duty, and she felt that there were a couple of clarifications that were really important in this. So, thanks to Logan for picking up on that.
Fantastic. Thank you. Great. Well, we will continue to consider these and bring them back for a vote at the next meeting, unless there's any further discussion.
So, I'm reading this, that after the third day and they get $50 a day, they have to turn it into the school?
Yeah, what happens is that they are paid by the school district for those days. And so, at some point, they, if they go beyond, and they rarely do, but if they go beyond, then they do have to give that money to the school district, because otherwise, they'd be getting double-dipping.
Is that on the contract also?
Yeah. It's a collective bargaining agreement.
It's not in the collective bargaining agreement, other than the reference to jury duty and leave for jury duty.
Because it seems like sort of a unilateral policy. Doesn't that look like a collective bargaining issue?
Yeah.
Well, it's the state compensating on top of wages.
Right.
Right, but I mean, if you ever try to take something back, someone's gotten something.
Right.
I don't think we have. I'm not sure how often people have gone beyond the three.
We can pull up the CBA.
Yeah, we can confirm that.
Great. Okay, so, moving on to our discussion votes to be taken, we're going to table the approval of the school handbooks for the next meeting. Just to underscore what Zona said, I think it's been an extraordinary commitment from the committee and administration to review those in a timely manner and get them set to be approved. And there's no harm in waiting until the next meeting to make sure they have a full and thorough review of all the handbooks. So, we'll do that August 15?
Yep.
Fantastic.
Can I just make a comment? I would like to say thank you so much, John, specifically for your adding the edits on the side. That was really helpful to see what we currently have, what you intend to change it to. That was very helpful to see that. Thank you.
Great. So, I'd like a motion to approve a gift donation from Q2 Red Robin Donations to CPS for .32?
Yes.
I thought that was an error.
It's not an error.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. We're going to do approval of new policies that we've had time to review. The first one is Policy DB regarding the annual budget. May I have a motion to approve?
Come on.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Policy FFA. I'm just making sure. I'm just making sure I have the right one here. And this is on memorials.
Let's see that.
It's on the back.
Oh, okay. Oh, perfect. Thank you.
One before.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Thank you. And now this is a vote to amend policies as they were currently written. Policy FF, naming facilities or spaces.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy GBEA, staff ethics, conflict of interest.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Policy GBED, tobacco use on school property by staff members prohibited.
One before.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy CJ, I'm sorry, C, wait, one more time, third time, G-C-J.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And that was for professional teacher status. Policy GCRD, tutoring for pay.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Policy GDQD, suspension and dismissal of support staff members.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to thank the policy subcommittee again for their hard work. We appreciate it very much. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the July 11, 2017 meeting?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. A motion to approve transfers and invoices.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And now we'll go to Superintendent Cozort.
Okay. The first thing is the Employee Assistance Program. I've included in your packet just a little bit of data so that you could see how that program is being used. Of course, we don't have any identifiable data. We wouldn't want that. But I think it's always interesting to see, as noted, 26, let's see, 27 individuals accessed the Employee Assistance Program, and 26 were staff members. One was a child. 25 remained in treatment, and four were repeat users of the EAP from prior years. So I think this is money that is well-spent. We contract with fair winds to provide that. The number of different kinds of things, it might be for, you know, emotional, social, could be for substance, could be for financial advice, and they sort of pass on those referrals to the appropriate people.
Fantastic. Mike, are there? I'm sorry, Pauline, would you like to go ahead?
Did you hear me breathe in?
I did. I did.
You're good. How do our staff know about this?
Every year, in the beginning of the year, we mention it at the opening session. It is something that we mention in faculty meetings, and then administrators will counsel if they know of staff members struggling, and the union knows about it. So they will put it out to their members as well.
Okay, thank you. Great. Any other questions on EAP?
Okay, and then on the horizon, I think we're pretty much staying on top of things. We have loaded up the next meeting a little bit, particularly with passing the handbooks on. Thank you. And Martin will do the fourth quarter budget update, which will have the year-end for community, school, and food service. That's always sort of an interesting information for us to gather. And we won't have yet the math report number two, because we're waiting for the MCAS results to have that. And then we'll have a few policies. I sometimes will put together my goals for you, and then soon in September, we start doing budget directives and the district goals. So I would encourage school committee members to be thinking about goals. And then Thursday night, we'll be doing a strategic planning session, so I will probably take much of what is said there in putting together the district goals.
I think it's maybe been a practice in past years, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, that we will review your goals and see if the district, we feel the district goals should be changed, and I think we have some important work to get through in the next week or so to determine that. Is it, does the timing work for us to maybe have a discussion on the goals at that 15th meeting and then adopt the goals?
Yes.
After Labor Day?
Yep.
Okay, start of school. Does that timing make sense for everybody? Fantastic. Well, thank you very much. Are there any subcommittee work group liaison reports or acknowledgements, student council reports, which I don't think so, because we haven't started school yet? Any updates? Okay. Wonderful. So for the agenda for the next meeting has been set, and I will look forward to, reminders, Mike said Thursday afternoon at 4:30, and if any school committee member cannot be present, please go ahead and email myself and/or Mike your thoughts and comments on priorities for strategic planning, which we hope to get underway in the fall.
And that will be, again, in the CPS conference room.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.